Good morning. I'd like to bring the meeting to order if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. I'd like to let it be known that all commissioners are present this morning. Are there going to be any agenda changes?
No.
Okay. Then I'm going to open up for public comment for anything that is not on the agenda today. If you would like to speak, now is the time. Okay, seeing none, we will close public comment and go to consent agenda for the approval of the minutes from September 13th. Are there any changes?
I think there may have been a gentleman that--
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Come on back. We'll go ahead and take your public comment. And this is for items not on the agenda.
For me?
This is -- you're going to speak for items not on the agenda.
Uh, no, I'm speaking for an item that is on the agenda.
Okay, then we'll have you hold your public comment until we get to that agenda item, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. For the approval of the min-- oh, sorry. Does anybody have any changes to the minutes?
I don't know what I got.
You didn't get them? There's my copy. Did everybody else get their minutes?
I did.
I did.
Do you want a second to read them, or -- okay. Okay, so is there any changes to the minutes? Yes?
On page two, John Ellis has spelled J.O.H.N. It should be J.O.N., the applicant.
Okay.
Under applicant presentation, that's all I had.
Okay. Any other changes?
No.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? You're going to abstain?
Yeah, I wasn't here for it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to the next item, we're going to be going over item E, which is a public hearing for 2018-032, general plan amendment. Gina, you representing that one?
Yes.
Okay.
We are actually requesting a continuance due to several pieces of late comments that we had received over the last two days. Some of you, if you've been keeping up with your email, I should have -- each one of you should have had at least three letters in your email box. But due to the fact that we need some additional time to craft a response to those late comments, we're requesting that we postpone this to the next hearing, which would be October 25th. Correct, Annette?
Yes.
Well, in addition, the applicant has requested it be continued to -- there are some timing issues associated with the farmland trust that I think Mr. Ola is here to address that, to formally request it to be continued.
Okay. Because I was going to say with the letters being so late, are the Orlas okay with extending their time as well?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I needed to hear. Okay. Is there -- I guess then at that point, we just need to see if the commissioners are willing to give an extension.
Orla is okay with it, but you guys also correct?
I guess, I believe so.
Is it time for move to continue?
And we need -- we're going to have to go to public comment.
I think procedurally, you would need to open up to public on the request for continuance. If we continue it, then we'll just hold all the discussion on the merits of the application to when it's continued.
And only have discussion on continuance. Okay. Does any of the commissioners have any comments?
No.
Okay. Does anybody in the public have any comments on the continuance only?
Can we get a copy of those late letters? That came in comments? That came in?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we'll make sure they're publicly available.
Thank you.
Should we post them on the web?
We'll figure out a way to make sure.
Okay.
Anybody else that has comments, could we provide them to the commission at this time? Do you want us to hold off?
We're going to hold off until we have the actual hearings. All we're discussing right now is a continuance.
If there are written comments you have, you want to submit to them, we can take those in and just include them in the packet.
Okay. What do you want me to give them to?
If you can give it to Gina, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. So if there's no further public comment, I will close public comment, bring it back to the commissioners for a continued date of October 25th.
I so moved.
Thank you.
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, carries five zero. So it will be continued to October 25th. Okay.
Do you mind if I submit a letter just to make sure it's in record here?
If anybody has any letters they'd like to submit, you can take them over to the planning department and hand them over the counter there if you'd like. We will move on to item number two, extension of time for approved TPM 2006-105. Gina, are you handling that one also?
Yes.
Thank you.
So this is a request from Mr. and Mrs. Batiari. They're requesting a two-year extension of time on approved tentative parcel map 2006-105. So back on August 8th, 2013, the planning commission approved a four, five-acre lot subdivision and negative declaration approving the tentative parcel map as presented in the packet. That was approved for 36 months. That was basically would extend that expiration out to August 8th, 2016. Prior to the expiration of the map, the applicant made contact with the planning department with the intention of filing for an extension of time. It was then that staff determined that the map qualified for a two-year extension under Assembly Bill 116 and basically instructed the applicant that applying for a extension at that time was not necessary, that the map was still active until 2018. So again, prior to the expiration of the map in August of this year, the applicant contacted, doing his due diligence, contacted the planning department once again to request an extension. It was then, at that time, that upon closer examination of the language in AB 116, we determined that indeed the map did not qualify for the two-year extension. So based on the fact that staff directed the applicant back in 2016 to not apply for an extension, we basically accepted his inquiry as a timely filing for an extension of time, allowing that to be -- allowing us to process an additional two years. So in addition to the initial two-year extension, that would have extended the map from 2016 to 2018, the applicant has formally made an application to extend the map an additional two years. So in a nutshell, if approved today, the map will, out of the four -- let me back it up. If approved, four out of the six years of discretionary extensions will apply to the map in question. Unlike subdivision maps, the tentative parcel map does not -- we do not need to make that finding of a good faith effort. In addition, there have been no changes in circumstances resulting in any amended conditions of the map or perhaps any significant environmental impacts. For these reasons, we are recommending approval of a four-year extension, extending that map out to August 8th, 2020.
Does the appellant have anything you would like to say? Not appellate, I'm sorry, applicant. Pardon me. Thank you.
My name is also the Batiari. The reason we had to wait is the cost of the road. The road from Warner Road up to our property, the commission, I guess, has made it our responsibility to basically do the entire road from the beginning for all the people that live at the beginning to the end of the road. In a nutshell, the people that we found to do the project, 140,000 or more, to do just the road. And we just sold our house in July and we started on doing the road. It's just money situation that we didn't have 140,000 to do it. And the person who was doing all of the planning and inspection, kind of coordinating the project, Mr. Jeffrey is passed away too. So it's kind of one after the other, wonderful man, but his office has kind of basically ended the project. Whatever they've done, we don't have access to it anymore. So that's why you need the extension.
And just for further clarification on that, I did confirm yesterday that Jeffrey's engineering is no longer, so the corporation is dissolved. And it would be up to the applicants to find a new licensed land surveyor engineer to continue their project, so they'll have to do that.
We just spent, I think about $4,500 to have someone go bulldozer whatever they do for the road, for the beginning, to about 1,000 feet. So as soon as we get the approval, since we sold the house, we have the money right now to get somebody to finish it off.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
No.
Okay. Okay. Is there anything further you want to add, or are we okay?
No, that's okay.
Okay. I just had a quick question. When I was looking at this, it's going to be four, five acre parcels?
Yes.
And don't we have an ordinance that you can't split below 40 unless you have sewer and water?
This was--
This was prior to the--
It was prior to the ordinance?
Right, right. So anything that was accepted, or actually, I think the resolution said approved prior to that resolution. This is exempt from that because it is all previous, prior to the adoption of that criteria resolution that you're speaking of.
Okay. Good. Is there any further questions?
No.
Okay. Does anybody have any public comment on this particular item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the commissioners.
Certainly sounds like a good thing to do the extension.
And the resolution is good as written?
No.
We do have a couple corrections.
Okay.
See if I can remember what they are. I remember where they are. So in the third and fourth whereas, we made some clarification. I added, the first whereas is going to read as follows. Whereas the passage of Assembly Bill 116 on May 10th, 2016, upon inquiry by the applicant. That was the addition. Planning staff determined that the tentative parcel map 2006-105 qualified for an automatic two-year extension, extending the expiration of the tentative map to August 8th, 2018. And the following whereas now reads, whereas on May 31st, 2018, upon another inquiry by the applicant, staff, planning staff determined that the -- decided that the determination that AB 116 applied to the subject map was inaccurate, but that the May 10th, 2016 inquiry to staff serves as a timely filing for a two-year discretionary extension of time.
Okay.
I'd also, in the title, a resolution approving a four-year extension of time.
Thank you.
And for clarification, under the general conditions, 1-3, the second sentence seems to me it'd be better to cross out the remaining and start it with two, number two, further years of discretionary extension of time. Make it clear that we're talking about additional time.
Okay. I think that's it. Are you guys ready for the recommendation? Okay. Gina?
Staff recommends the planning commission adopt Resolution 2018-061, approving a four-year extension of time for approved tentative parcel map 2006-105, extending the map to August 8th, 2020, based upon the findings including therein as amended.
Thank you. Motion?
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
And just for the record, this action is final unless approved, or unless appealed to the board supervisors. But the extension has been approved.
Okay. Moving on to item number three, 2017-118, zoning ordinance amendment adding chapter 17.52, design review. And Peter, are you?
Yes.
Okay.
So this was continued from the prior meeting, and we've made some changes to address some of the issues that were brought forward at that meeting. There are changes to the resolution as well as to the ordinance itself. Let's turn to the ordinance. What I've done is sort of expanded the discussion of the applicability somewhat and tried to clarify that, you know, where it says exemptions, those are really sort of the limits. So the purpose of these changes is to essentially apply what requirements are adopted in the design standards to this, rather than try to set it out specifically in this, because it could vary from community to community. There are two other, one other edit I would like to make to that on section 1752020, applicability. In the first line, it says, combining zone shall apply to specific--
Mr. Power, can you slow down?
Oh, okay, sorry.
-- a whole bunch of documents in it.
Okay.
I'm not sure which one you're looking at.
So we are on, I sent out an email that contained revisions to the ordinance and the resolution. And so this is the draft ordinance. It shows some underlining and strikeout that was attached to that email that was sent on October 1st.
October 1st.
So it's about a, there's a short, about a half a page email that--
It was October 2nd.
I also sent it, so I apologize.
Well, it was dated October 1st. It went out on the 2nd, because it was like the end of the day when I did it.
Okay. So we're looking at it.
So we're looking at the ordinance, which are the last two pages of that. Okay. And then under applicability, section 020 on the first sentence, I would like to substitute the word prescribed for specific. And on the second line, where it says, adopted by the board of supervisors, and are zoned, I'd like to insert the word which, and which are zoned. Just be consistent grammatically.
While you're on that one, I think the last citation to 17.52.060, it's actually 17 comma 52.
Oh, that should be a period, not a comma. On the resolution, on the second page, this show, well, the general plan finding listed number two, starting on the bottom of the first page, we struck out the reference to specific communities and then added sort of a general statement regarding that some community plans have provisions that talk about community consistency and architectural standards. Would like to change the second sentence, starting after, or actually would be the third sentence, starts with this ordinance will facilitate. I'd like to substitute will facilitate implementation of with provides an option that communities may use to. Or no.
Say that again, please.
Hold on a second. That should read, this ordinance provides an option that communities may use to facilitate implementation of design standards.
No, that's not what I'm looking at. I'm looking to the last part. Even this email doesn't show that.
I want to read that sentence again.
So essentially, I'm adding, it should read, this ordinance provides an option that communities may use to facilitate implementation of design standards to assist in determining compatibility. Essentially, strike the word will and add provides an option that communities may use Just want to make it clear that this is optional. It's not going to be mandatory in every community that as communities work towards, you know, enhancing their communities, they may petition the board to adopt standards and to establish a prescribed area that those standards apply to.
And you did say, you did say an option, right?
An option, yes.
Showing that that's not the only alternative.
Yes.
I wonder about inserting the word design before compatibility at the end of that sentence?
I'm fine with that.
So I'm looking at the ordinance for--
The ordinance?
Yeah, with the resolution, excuse me.
Okay. I'm sorry, mine's such a mess now.
No, it's fine. Mess is good. Okay. So under the evidence on the email that I'm looking at, that was sent out on October 2nd, which was been the latest one, it's still listing Murphy's community plans.
No, that should be, that's, that line has been struck out.
It's not on the one that I got emailed, so okay. Yours is, okay. Mine's not. And then when you flip it?
It just takes all that out.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And then we added the word optional, so I'm good to go. If everybody else is liking, we can take it to public comment. If you guys have any other questions, let me know.
It's an option, just to clarify. Specifically optional, but it's the effect.
Want to go to public comment?
Sure.
Is there anybody that has any public comment on this? Okay. We'll close public comment, bring it back to the commissioners. You had your opportunity there.
I have a question on how the ordinance works with respect to the exemptions, of which there are two, interior modeling and changes to copy on existing signs. Now, if there to be design standards established for some area that actually included as a covered subject, changes to copy on existing designs, then this ordinance would not apply. And then the state of affairs would be what? Somebody would have to go to the planning commission?
So the concern we have with the copy on the sign is the First Amendment rights to, you know, put what you want on your sign. We can address issues of color and style, but not what the sign says.
But wouldn't that issue come up when the board was considering to adopt the design standards at that time? They would receive advice presumably that you shouldn't do this. And my only--
Yeah, we could strike changes of copy to sign, and then they could be addressed in the design standards themselves.
Well, I think what Commissioner Wooster is asking is what happens if the design standards get passed with something that is not, we're not permitted, that the ordinance says we're not permitted to touch? Is that the question?
Well, I don't, I don't think that this ordinance, the way it's set up, would prohibit design standards for the subjects that are part of the exemptions. This is a procedural ordinance. This is a design review ordinance. It tells you how you review it. If you don't fall within this ordinance, then the procedure for planning director approval don't apply.
Right.
And so if you, if you had some, if you did have design standards that somehow fall within these exemptions, unlikely, but possible?
I'm sure we would ask the board of supervisors to not allow them or to not enforce them to the extent that we felt they were unconstitutional.
And if that happened, then there would never be a need for the exemptions, because there would never be design standards that fell within the exemptions.
But I do think that this serves as a reminder to the board and to future staff that when something's coming up before the board of supervisors, a design review ordinance, that these are areas they shouldn't mess with. So I think it serves some purpose. We can't assume that we have exactly the same highly constitutionally sensitized people on the staff that we have now.
Well, I mean, I also just, the communities that are going to be looking at this ordinance to develop their standards would presumably read this and realize this is going to be a no-no with the board of supervisors.
I'm trying to think of a situation where, let's say, a community says we only want green and blue signs. And someone says, well, I want to put a red sign up. And I'll, okay, I'll put a blue sign up because that's what was approved, but then I'm going to change a copy of it and make it red instead. I'm going to keep the frame, everything, I'm just going to, you know, swap out the internal message itself. I know that there's a community in Arizona where the golden arches are turquoise, because that was their design standards. Everything must be, you know, taos, you know, color, you know. So you can regulate the color, you just can't regulate what it says.
Yeah, I take the word copy to mean the actual content, not the color of the copy.
And that particular word bugs me. I know what the word copy means, but it's, to me, it's an unusual word. I'm not sure the average person reading it would know what that means.
Well, I can give you an example on those colors where things are going to get tough and not fly is when you own a franchise corporation and you have guidelines you have to follow, because I own a franchise, and guess what? There's red in it. That doesn't fit into the model of what Arnold would like to see with Alpine look. But, so, I mean, there's caution there with how far this can go. I, changes to copy on existing signs, and when we--
How about the phrase textual content?
Word.
Would that, well, I mean-- Would that, well, I mean, I'm trying to get the...
Maybe we're not getting into the color, this is not what we're saying.
Right, we're just talking words.
The language.
Well, we could change copy to content.
Content, to me, is a broader term.
It's really broad.
I mean, that, that could be color.
I guess, my point, I guess, which I'm not being very clear on, is that if it is a design standard that's adopted by the board, no matter what it is, then it seems to me that these procedures ought to apply to them, instead of some other procedures.
Right.
And when you introduce an exemption to the procedures, you create a situation in which you could have a design standard that gets adopted, not subject to these procedures, the fallback being the old procedures, which I guess requires planning commission approval. That's my only point.
No, I think what would happen is that it would not require planning commission approval, it would be allowed by right.
Yeah, well, the public comment, public still has input on that.
What, I'm wondering, Commissioner Wooster, if your issue would be addressed by, instead of calling it an exemption, just saying, communities shall not develop design review standards regarding these two topics?
Well, that would, that would meet the issue head-on and do what you want to do, instead of doing it indirectly.
Yeah.
That's a nice suggestion.
Do we need to reference the sign ordinance in the county in there? Because there is a sign ordinance in this county.
Well, the sign ordinance addresses basically how big a sign may be.
It addresses more than that. It addresses digital, it addresses a lot of things.
Well, I guess I'm, you know, if someone wanted to put up a poll sign, you know, what we look at, you're right, there's lighting, yeah.
Squared footage, red light, blah, 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 yeah.
But it doesn't say it has to be this color, you know, it can only be made of wood.
I like his suggestion.
Yeah, let's, let's work on some language there.
Could we call 1752-040 limitations on design review standards?
Yes.
And we can just say, design review standards shall not include, semicolon, and then A and B?
No, I think that handles it in a straightforward manner.
And then the B, somehow the word text came to my mind, instead of copy. And that I think is a clearer word. I get these inspirations sometimes.
We're changing it to text, instead of copy?
That's my suggestion.
I agree with it.
Sounds good to me.
Text of?
Of text.
Well, I think at this point, it wouldn't be necessarily just changes to existing signs, it would be the text of signs.
Yeah, yeah.
So we could regulate color, we could regulate lighting, we could regulate, but we can't regulate what it, what it actually says.
Do you want to say textual content, to make sure that we're not talking about the design of the letters?
How did they do that?
Okay.
I like that.
It's a whole different issue, but I'm just curious how they did that whenever they enforced cannabis dispensaries and wouldn't let them use certain copy. Isn't that against the law?
Probably, probably not on the agenda right now.
And copy! Just saying. Okay, is there any public comment on this agenda item?
Sounds good.
Thank you. Okay, bringing it back to the commission.
I think with these changes, it's fine.
Okay, everybody good? Okay, then can we get a resolution recommendation on this one, Peter?
Yes, staff recommends that the commission adopt resolution number 2018-056 recommending to the Board of Supervisors to adopt ordinance amendment adding chapter 17.152, 17.52, design review to title 17, as amended.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. So four, one. Those are no? Yeah. Who was that? That was me. Okay, next item on the agenda is, somewhere, okay, 2018-044.
Okay, and this was also continued from the last meeting because we didn't have the design review ordinance in place. It was no sense in recommending that they adopt the designer view zoning, combining zone. In this situation, we, there was a couple of changes that were requested at the last minute, that parcel 18005009, that portion of it south of Garden Lane be added to that. I've also clarified on the list that parcel 18011006, that only that portion, zone C2, would be included. I communicated with the property owner of 18002056, who indicated that first she wanted to not have designer view applied and retain the plan development. Subsequently, she sort of realized that that's not what she wanted. And so on the exhibit one list, it shows that APN struck out. That should be kept in, so it should not be struck out. And that's at the multifamily parcel at the end of...
So now she wants to be in it?
Now she, well, she's already in PD.
Right.
And so at first she said, oh, I just want to keep mine PD, not designer view.
Okay, got it, all right.
But then when I explained what that meant, it was, oh, no, 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 I want designer view, not PD. So, and I, I have that in writing from her. There are also a couple of changes, corrections on the resolution, therefore resolved, strike the word add, about the middle of the paragraph there, sentence. It says amendment to add, remove, should be to remove the plan development. And then in the last, second to last line, the number 16 should change to 17.
And what about the one that you were just referring to? Does that change the numbers there at all?
That, that would change the number. The, the, the one with the going back and forth between the PD and the desire, that actually would change the numbers. And then on the next page, under the evidence, under the first goal, that should be protected and enhanced, that should be a D. I realize that the evidence, the organization of that was a little bit possibly confusing. There are no numbers to any of the goals or policies in the, in the McCollum Hill community plan, so it's difficult to try to organize them. The first goal, policy, implementation measure were all sort of combined, the, the other goals and policies, I just sort of listed them since they weren't specifically related to each other. There wasn't, there wasn't a really clear way to, to do that. If you feel it would be better, I could just put goal, you know, which one of these statements are goals, which one of those policies, that would be clear. Commissioner Ladish had brought that issue up to me the other day.
I was just kind of confused. I'm trying, trying to learn what the differences are between goals and policies.
Yeah, well, in this case, sometimes they, there wasn't a lot of clarity of what was a goal, what was a policy. They were just listed in certain ways.
And, and since then, I've realized what you're doing here is saying, well, this is, this is what the McCollum Hill community plan provided.
These are the various statements within the plan. Some of them are listed as goals, some are listed as policies, some are listed as implementation measure.
Since that's a part of the general plan, right?
Yes.
Right, then it's consistent the way it is.
Okay, good.
So I don't think you have to mess around with it.
Good, thank you.
And I would say that there's also, now, the second time when you say goals, the McCollum Hill community plan shall preserve the historical integrity and atmosphere, you need another D there.
Nope.
Okay. I'm going to take it to public comment if you guys are, okay, does anybody in the public have any comment on this agenda item?
Good morning, commissioners, staff. Mike Delorto from McCollum Hill. We, we had quite a group of people that were prepared to come today, but you process things so fast, everybody was, probably show up later. But that's good to hear, you guys are taking care of the people quickly. This is a long endeavor. We started out with a community plan, I think, in the 70s. Our goals were to preserve the historic qualities of the town, plus allow people to continue and move forward. Well, I think what we did was we protected ourselves so well that we shot ourselves in both feet. Consequently, with the PD situation, which we thought would protect us from having a McDonald's in downtown McCollum Hill next to the hotel, which hasn't happened, by the way, we ended up with PD, and the PD became so, is such an onerous process, that little people can't afford to play the game. And we've had a couple of people that had to go through this design review so they could upgrade their old stone structures, and if you've been in McCollum Hill, you can see a couple of them, they really look great. But anyhow, hopefully, this will be something that will make this much more reasonable for people to move forward, they can find out what the criteria is, and they'll, it'll process. It'll, from my standpoint, it will be a much fairer, quicker, easier process so little people can say, when I say little people, I mean like me, can say, okay, this is what it's going to cost me, I'm either going to go or I'm not going. Okay, I don't have to hire seven engineers and architects. But anyhow, very supportive, the community's been very supportive of this. When we had the community general plan considerations, it was absolute, with the exception of one, which I think you mentioned earlier today, that may have changed our mind, everybody wanted to get the PD as far away from McCollum Hill as possible. So we would thank you if you do that.
Thank you for considering this and culminating 30 years of trying to get this through, so you're here at the exciting moment. I think it's all great, I had a little question about just some wording under evidence on page two of two. So about in the middle, it says, to identify specific means to protect the downtown historical areas of the community. I don't know, is downtown...
That's the language straight from the community plan.
Okay. Commercial. And then down near the bottom, about the sixth lineup, in areas adjacent to the study area, would that be the adjacent to the historic district? Study area looks like a C quote, kind of.
Again, these goals and policies are direct quote from the community plan.
Okay, then we'll leave them alone.
It must be great.
We don't want to go back and fool around with the community plan, we've gotten there. So I just thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, everyone, I'm Terry Weatherby, the only structural engineer with office in four counties, and it's my, we've, we've been fighting for this for a long, long time, and 12 years I've been trying to get rid of this. I do a lot of projects in Mo Kill, I do a lot of projects in all of your guides' districts, and this PD has been the biggest pain ever. Design review is a, is a big step, that's part of the PD, so we're backing it off to just the design review, and it, everyone in Mo Kill that I talked to was all flipped out over getting these letters, and when I explained, look, we're taking it from here to here, it's a big step towards maybe actually making things easier to, to get projects done in McCollum Hill. So thank you guys very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other further public comment? Seeing that, I'll close the public comment, bring it back to the commissioners for discussion.
I'm in favor of, once again, I like the community of McCollum Hill has shown remarkable unity and agreement, and anytime the community can do that, I'm all in favor of letting them do what they want to do, within bounds.
I agree, I feel the same way. I know that your community has worked very hard on this, I'm proud of you guys for pulling it together. I don't know that going from PD to DR and having an overlay on your zoning is really getting what you think you're getting, I have concerns about that. I have those same concerns for my area, because we have PD, so I know exactly what you're talking about when you talk about the long process that you need to go through. Design review is not going to remove architectures, you're still going to need to do that to be able to get through that process. You're still going to have fees, you're still going to have delays, nothing changes except for you don't have a planning commission hearing, and the planning department will have full discretion of how your project moves forward, because the public still has input. I could still see appeal process coming. I'm proud of you guys for doing what you've done, because you have a historical town that is really worth preserving, and I've been there, and I love what you guys have done in the town, so I give you all my kudos, but I just needed to express that I think changing the letters from PD to DR is, that's it, that's what you're doing. And I have fearful for your future in being the same as PD, that's just my personal opinion, sitting here and experiencing PD. So on that note, I think we will go to the commissioners, yes?
Yeah, I just have a technical comment or possible change under the evidence of the resolution. The IM, it took me more than a few seconds to figure it out, that implementation measures, I just spelt it out.
Okay.
And then the last two sentences are so duplicative, in areas adjacent to the study area and outside, or outside the identified historical district. You could combine the two if you want.
Well, again, these are just...
Not a big deal, either way.
These are direct policy statements from the community plan, so I just put them in there verbatim.
And, and they're part of the general plan, and so therefore this is showing a consistent with, consistency with the general plan, if some confusion in the content.
Okay, so, do you want to read the recommendation, Peter?
Yes, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution number 2018-057, a resolution recommending the Board of Supervisors approve a general plan amendment and zoning map amendment for 118 parcels in McCollum Hill, removing the plan development, combining land use and zoning designation, and adding the designer view combining zone.
And that's as amended?
As amended, yes, thank you.
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? K5O.
I would just like to thank the members of the public, the community members of McCollum Hill, have been great to work with, and appreciate their assistance on this.
That's awesome, great, thanks, guys. Okay, so, and congratulations, because that not only is a historical town, but this is a historical event for you.
Well, part of the long historical.
Right. Okay, so, moving on, are there any action items?
Yes.
Ooh.
That was, that was added in the...
Yes.
So there are actually two things I'd like to bring up. One is, in, back in July, the board adopted the accessory dwelling ordinance, revised some of the standards. Subsequently, we found that the requirements for well testing are really sort of unnecessary and onerous. The environmental health director has been working with the well drilling community and saying, you know, why, why are we requiring... and saying, you know, why, why are we requiring this? So I'd like to bring back an amendment to that ordinance to revise those provisions to make it, make the process more, more realistic. In order to do so, I need a vote of the Planning Commission or the Board to initiate a zoning amendment. And so I'm requesting that such a vote be made today to direct me to work with Environmental Management Agency to revise Chapter 1766.
I did have a question regarding that. There was a building industry meeting recently, and the question was asked, does the, does that include septics? And in the amendment that you're going to be working on with Environmental Health, it only talks about wells, and I'm wondering if we shouldn't address the issue of septics because it was stated in that meeting that they could share the septic. So I would like to know that we can have clarity on that in the amendment.
Certainly.
Okay, that would be my request.
Ready for a motion?
I'm ready.
I so move with the suggestion by the Chair.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
The second aspect of this was the fact that I have to bring these little minor correction issues to you.
Yes.
And the ordinance, it's 1786, that talks about zoning ordinance amendments, requires any amendment to be initiated by the Planning Commission or the Board, unless it's a property owner applying for a rezon of the property. I'd like to consider revising that section that would allow staff to initiate correction provisions or minor adjustments such as we just discussed, without having to take this extra step and bring it forward to you as well. So that's...
We'd still be considering the amendments, but...
Still, the whole process will have to go through.
We don't have to tell you that you can present us with amendments.
Right.
Well, I think if a change needs to be made, that you guys are the experts in knowing that it needs to be made and bringing it forward. I don't think you need our permission to make a change that's necessary.
Other than the code requires me to do that, yes.
I mean, if we can't have enough faith in you to make that decision to bring something forward, then we've got a real problem, and I have the faith in you to do that, so...
And obviously, anything that has any kind of controversy or political nature, I would get direction from either you or the Board before I started working on something like that anyway.
Right.
But something minor such as this, this, you know, and we'd have to craft the language carefully to make, you know, making sure that, you know, we're talking about minor technical changes and not, you know, hey, let's...
I look forward to seeing that.
You know, bring the ordinance back and we'll be able to say, go for it.
Right.
Okay. Or no.
So, given all that, can I just say, I so move, and it'll make sense?
I would maybe make it a little more clear that...
Okay, I, I move that the, that the planning staff...
I need to ask for public comment.
Oh, yes.
Okay, seeing none, go ahead, now make your motion. Still have to do it.
I move that the planning department be enabled to present, propose minor changes in ordinances to the Planning Commission without first getting the Planning Commission and Board's permission to so suggest.
Good enough.
That can be good enough.
Okay, is there a second on that? I guess not. Do we want to reword that? Okay, let's hear it.
I move that Peter do what he wants to do.
It died with no second. Let's get a new motion.
How about just, I consider an amendment to Section 1786-020, to allow staff to initiate minor changes.
I so move.
All right, now do I have a second?
I'll second that one.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One opposed. Okay. Okay. Next item on the agenda is informational, anything going on with the general plan?
Wading through the comments.
Wading through the comments, okay. Study sessions?
Well, any thoughts about when it might be coming to us?
I'm hesitant to say anything, just because I really don't know.
That's fine.
We have some meetings scheduled internally, and we'll get a better idea.
There's no study sessions, are there any Commissioner reports?
Yeah, to, to all the members of the public here, I suggest that they study how McCollum Hill does it. I think that McCollum Hill is a great example of a community that is able to reach community agreement without great controversy. And however they did it, I think other communities ought to take, take notice and take some advice from them.
Good. Any other Commissioner reports? Planning Director reports?
Nope.
And we're adjourned.
All right.